I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that there is no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the road to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Louie Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
And Counselor Worel.
Here.
A quorum is present.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Also, if you want to switch your name tags, there, it says Counselor Santana. That's where I was thrown off, so please, yeah. And I'd also like to note that we also have with us here in chambers today the Irish Council General of New England, Sheila Fitzgerald. Thank you for being with us today as we celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Sister Pat Andrews, invited by Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor, and after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce Sister Pat Andrews. I was just saying she's a frequent flyer in the chamber here. She's offered an invocation on many occasions in the past. Sister Pat is a neighbor of mine in Brighton. She's a member of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Boston and has just celebrated 60 years of mission and service as a teacher in the Boston area. We won't hold it against her, but she was born in Brockton. So with Sister Pat Andrews as a teacher, and then when she retired from teaching in schools, she took on the job of working at the Literacy Connection, a mission of the Sisters of St. Joseph that does adult education, preparing immigrants who want to become citizens to do their citizen's exam, and also ESL classes, English as a second language class for immigrant population. I think it's a theme this week that we really understand the incredible value of immigrants in our neighborhoods and in our city, and it's so important to support them to settle here and to become full citizens. And Sister Pat has many, many years of service in that area, and we're very, very grateful for that. She's also like an emissary for the sisters. She's out and about a lot in the neighborhood and turns up to everything, so we really appreciate her offering a blessing and an invocation this morning. Sister Pat.
Thank you. And as you can see, I'll put my canes and everything away because I know that I have a number of people here who can rescue me, and they have. I want to say thank you for your welcome, and to Counselor Braden, all right, sincere gratitude for this honor to join you in prayer. The new year of 2025 has rapidly transformed life as we know it for millions of people throughout the world, and there is great uncertainty around us. And so, to our God of many names, but always a God of inclusive love, we pray. Loving God, we hold in tenderness and prayer the collective suffering of our world at this time, and we grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We are a country pledged to pursue liberty and justice for all, but we are often too divided across lines of race, ethnicity, and inequality. We are a nation of immigrants, struggling to address challenges of many new immigrants in our midst. We are an affluent society where too many live in poverty and many have lack of health care and the necessities of life. We are a part of a larger global community facing urgent threats to the environment, and that must sustain us all. These challenges are at the heart of public life and at the center of the pursuit of the common good. God of enduring love, may our personal faiths give us the strength to witness with courage to the challenges before us. May we be united, both as elected civic leaders and responsible involved citizens and neighbors in building our Commonwealth, where everyone can have the opportunity to live with dignity and hope. God of sustaining love, bless our efforts as we work together, so that all may be one for a future yet to come. I did speak with Counselor Liz, and I asked her if I may bring with me today one of our hymns that as Sisters of St. Joseph we do sing when we are on our way into different ministries, are involved in different programs. This is something that we bring, and we bless all of us at this point. So for Counselor Liz and also for Counselor Ruth Zee, these are people I know, Counselor Ed. So I wanted to bring all of us together, in a sense, and not just maybe one or two, okay? So please, with no music, you can just put your fingers in your ears, that's fine. But this is precious to us because we are blessing each other, and we are all in this together. May the greatest love the world has ever known seize you, inspire, set your heart on fire, and dare you to be bold, with wisdom to be told. May the neighborhood of our sacred universe be carried and treasured, embraced inside of you. That all may be one for a future yet to come. This we ask, this we pray, as we bless you this day. Thank you, dear friends.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Sister Pat. There was no need to plug our ears, that was beautiful. And we thank you so much for your advocacy on behalf of all of our residents, not just in Austin, Brighton, but all of our residents in all of our immigrant communities. May you continue to challenge us to make sure that we're showing up for everyone. Thank you, Sister Pat. And thank you, Counselor Braden.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have two presentations today. The first presentation is from Counselor -- oh, before we do that, Mr. Clerk, can we please update the record to reflect that Counselors Coletta Zapata is with us, Counselor Mejia, and Counselor Fernandez Anderson are now present and with us? Okay. The first presentation is from Counselor Murphy, the Peggy Woods Dance Group. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor in five minutes in honor of Irish American Heritage Month and St. Patrick's Day. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day month, like we like to refer to it. This morning, thank you to everyone who joined us. We had our flag raising outside on City Hall Plaza, and we had a nice reception after, catered by Scobies, which was wonderful. And we are going to have the Council Generals say a few words for us, and we will have some entertainment before the council meeting. So the Woods School of Dancing from South Boston, we have several dancers who are here who are looking forward to entertaining us a little before the council meeting starts. But I would like to pass it off to my two other colleagues who sponsored this with us. So Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, and to Counselor Fitzgerald. We had a wonderful flag-raising ceremony this morning out in City Hall Plaza. It was wonderful to see the young students from the Elliott School with us as we were singing Irish songs, and then we had a nice reception as well in the Piedmonte Room. But what we did is we celebrated the enormous contributions and sacrifices of the Irish and Irish-American community to our city and to our country. Honored to be here and also honored to be with my neighbors in South Boston. Many of them will be dancing for us as part of the Peggy Woods School of Irish Step Dancing. I know Peggy and Roseanne very well, and looking forward to seeing my neighbors perform traditional Irish dancing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Flynn. It's a great honor to have the Council General Fitzgerald here, my namesake, with us today, and also looking forward to the Irish Step. I know my three-year-old daughter is in her first year of Irish Step, so I look forward to seeing what she -- this action in the future in my own family. And just want to -- it's a great -- this is a great month to celebrate all the contribution from the Irish immigrants that when they came over and seeing what Ireland and the Irish have done for this city, let us not forget that when we think of those going through their immigration today, trying to come to this country. And so, I think it really is a great perspective in bringing it all together. And with that, I'd love to introduce Sheila Fitzgerald, the Irish Council General.
Gormil Mhagath. It's michealne giald, or the council in the hair in the vasting, and I want to wish you a happy St. Patrick's Day, and as we say in Irish, bannic the na feil a por ag leith galair. I'm delighted and very honored to be here, and I want to thank President Lejeune and the elected members for inviting me here today. Over 33 million people claim Irish heritage, or Americans claim Irish heritage and are so proud of their heritage. And the relationship between Ireland and the U.S. is a very strong one. I would say the Irish peace process would not have been possible without the help of the United States and members of people from Boston, like Tip O'Neill, who were very involved in the peace process and many others. So this is a month in which we celebrate all our connections, our people-to-people connections, which are so strong and so important. And here in the most Irish city in all of America, I'm very proud to be the Council General. So thank you very much for your invitation here today, and bannic the na feil a por ag leith galair. Gormil Mhagath.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council General. You are always welcome here at our city council meetings and in our city hall. You are always so welcoming and inviting to all of us. And there's so much richness in the Irish freedom story, in Irish history, in the Irish-American story here, and so it's always a joy to have you. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselors Murphy, Flynn, and Fitzgerald, for making sure that we continue to honor Irish heritage here in the city of Boston. And I know my other colleagues, Counselors Braden, Durkin, and even Counselor Coletta Zapata, I believe, and their Irish roots, want to make sure that we honor them and uplift them. I see a lot of my colleagues wearing green because we know on St. Patrick's Day and during St. Patrick's Month, we are all Irish. So lots of really great green here. And I know that Counselor Murphy is bringing the dancers in. So I just want to thank Counselor Murphy because it was a really wonderful flag-raising this morning with students from the Elliott who performed some songs, and we had a lot of past and present elected officials with us, Clerk Powers, who I'm not sure if is still here, Clerk Henigan, former City Councilor Henigan, former City Councilor McDermott, and former State Representative Jim Barat. So I want to thank all of them for being here with us. And the Irish Step dancers should be coming in soon. I hear Counselor Murphy getting them ready. The anticipation. Can you stay here? That was incredible. Can we take a picture with you? Is that okay? That was incredible. So good that we want to take a picture with all of you. If my colleagues, the Council General, Sister Pat, could all come and take a photo? Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you to the Peggy Woods Dance Group. That was incredible. That was incredible. And I'm not supposed to clap, but that was so good, okay? Next, we have a presentation from Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor in five minutes. Oh, yes. Yes, there was a scheduling error, but yes, you have two. You have two. And you have as quickly as possible. Thank you. Honoring -- Counselor Mejia will be honoring our members of our trans community, and she will also be honoring social workers. Thank you. We'll be here until tomorrow, y'all. Ah-ha. Yes, we got it. Just a second. Good afternoon, everybody. I am really excited to be here with you all today. Just a little bit of history, I think it's important for you all to understand kind of my why. There's a member of the trans community who works in our office. We were planning a trip to DC, and she was afraid to go to DC because of everything that was happening on the national landscape. And it was the first opportunity that we had to really look at what we can do in this moment. And so, we don't want our people to live in fear. We want to make sure that we see and affirm. And so, as soon as we had that conversation, Scarlett, who's making her way down here, created an opportunity for me to meet with a group of trans Latina women who are also living in fear. And in that conversation, they uplifted one name, and that was Chastity. And if you know who that is, you know why she's here today. Because under her leadership, we have been working on looking to see not only how we do a resolution, because we know it's a non-binding resolution, it has no teeth to it, but what we are hoping to do is work alongside this coalition directed by Chastity to do something more and to affirm and to work on an ordinance that we can bring here to the city council so that we can do the people's business. And it's going to be under their leadership that we're going to move the work forward. And so, I just want to thank them for organizing and creating space for us to recognize who it is that we're here to fight for. Because a lot of people wanted us to be quiet about this. A lot of people were saying, "Not now," because, "Look, we're under attack." The folks back here were saying, "Now is the time for us to stand up and affirm our dignity, and we're not going to live in fear." And so, this is the first step in that direction. And so, we invite folks to be a part of the conversation and to work alongside this coalition to ensure that we get it right. So I'm looking to my colleagues when we have time to pass. And obviously, I'm going to pass the mic over to my colleague who's working on this.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia, and thank you for including me in this resolution and to partner, asking me to partner in the work. And thank you all for being here today. This is a very difficult time for everyone on many, many counts, but it's particularly difficult for our trans community because of the incredibly negative and disparaging rhetoric that we've heard in the last year in the presidential election. And how things are moving forward is not very encouraging either. I think this is a moment to step up and say, "We all deserve to be treated with dignity and respect and to live our lives without fear." And I, as Counselor Mejia said, this resolution is a first step to try and just make a statement of our values, that we value and respect the dignity of all people and that everyone should be able to live in peace and safety, and especially our Black and trans women in our communities and across the country. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna, I am going to take a little bit of extra time here because I have Chastity, who's also going to say a few words, and I just want to uplift that Giselle Bird from the Executive Director of the Theater Offense couldn't be here. And I'm just going to say one thing that she asked is to uplift, is that we must create our own sacred spaces, sanctuaries, that are portals of safety, healing, and cultural abundance. Boston is the theater of offensive birthplace, and we have been fostered here with love and support for 36 years. But now, we must codify this so that our community finds belonging. We cannot be left to fight alone. We must stand united. As the birthplace of American Revolution, let the revolution continue as we protect all of Boston and its inhabitants, who deserve the liberty and justice of and embedded in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I am going to pass the mic to the Chair of this coalition. Chastity, you now have the floor.
Good afternoon. My name is Chastity Boick. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a Black transgender woman and a Boston resident. Not only am I an activist, I am a health and housing advocate, not only for trans communities but all marginalized communities. I'm leading this coalition to not only pass this resolution, which is symbolic, but also the first step into creating legislation that will further protect trans and LGBTQ+ communities in Boston. With transgender diverse communities being attacked on a national level, Boston has to step up and be the staple of the movement for saving our lives, especially Black and Brown transgender people. We haven't heard Boston since our new administration have an attack on our lives. We have not heard Boston support us, say they stand in solidarity with us. It's been silence. And so, as taxpayers, as people who are paying this high rent in Boston, who are going over these potholes in Boston, we have a right and we have a say-so, and we want our sanctuary city. Not that we want it, but we need it. We all know what's going on in Texas right now. They're trying to make it illegal to be transgender to live in the state of Texas. But we are better than that. We are Massachusetts. We are Boston, so we're going to continue to be the staple point. And I just want to thank you all in advance for your support in helping us save our lives. Thank you.
Good morning. Honorable Consejo, hoy me presento ante ustedes como miembro de la comunidad trans latina en Boston. para solicitar su apoyo y la aprobación de esta resolución que declara a nuestra ciudad como un santuario para personas trans y de la comunidad LGBT. A pesar de las protecciones legales en Massachusetts, nuestra comunidad sigue enfrentando desafíos significativos. Por ejemplo, a nivel nacional, más del 50% de las personas trans han sido víctima de violencia sexual, discriminación, entre otros, desproporciones financieras. Por lo cual ser una ciudad santuario garantiza que nuestras vidas sean respetadas, tengamos accesos a servicios sin temor, which is the most important thing, to live without fear. Y les pido que voten a favor de esta resolución para que se valore la equidad de la justicia y se refleje en nuestras comunidades. Muchísimas gracias.
Y'all better get Google Translate. I will not be translating. Okay, EJ.
My name is EJ Eisen, and I am a transgender man. I'm a husband. I'm a small business owner. And I'm one of the 40% of transgender people who self-identify as having a disability. Sanctuary cities are not just conceptual symbols. They are demonstrative that we are a collective of people with ethics. As a transgender person, I've experienced discrimination and violence that I've been asked too many times to rehash as a justification for protection instead of being valued inherently. The recent attacks on my communities, particularly trans women of color and trans youth, are abhorrent and terrifying. This resolution demonstrates that Boston's agreement to start from a place of shared humanity. It is the intention to protect one another from unjust bombardments that are intended to make us feel alienated at absolute best and eliminated at worst. I want nothing more than to just continue my work within the disability community and to know that transgender people are valued for their talents and skills and not just for their vulnerability. Transgender people deserve to thrive wherever we live. Today's sanctuary resolution is just the start in Boston's commitment to transgender residents thriving here at home. Thank you.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to come up and take a photo. And as we make our way here, I just want to note for the record is that we are following Worcester and Cambridge. And this is such a bigger movement here. And I just want to, I see Jack here, and I want to just acknowledge you and all the work that you've been doing in this space. Sorry. Come on, Jack. Come on up, please. Yes. This is for everybody up in here. And we're going to work together. And we're going to demonstrate what it looks like working across our differences. And we hear you, we see you, we affirm you, we love you, and we're here for all of it. So come on up, and let's be about it. And give it up, everybody. Clap. I know, sorry. I know, there's no, I know. The President just gave me the "I." Sorry, everybody. Make sure everyone has a window. Can you see everyone? All right. Thank you. That's right. I might as well stay up here. All right. So that means the social worker, y'all only get two minutes, because I took some of y'all's time, okay? Just so you know. And you already saw me yesterday, right? So y'all, you already got, y'all already got the love from me yesterday. All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. All right. So we, today, I am so excited. And I want the social workers to make your way down, because we're going to be talking about y'all. We're going to take a picture with y'all. So y'all might as well just come on down while we do this. But so today, I'm happy to work alongside my colleagues Counselor Anderson, who is an original co-sponsor, and Counselor Louie Jean. Today, our office is going to be filing a resolution. And we are declaring March 12, 2025, as School Social Worker Appreciation Day in the City of Boston. Oh, y'all are going to get in trouble. Stop it. Our BPS social workers play a critical role in supporting students' academic, social, and emotional well-being. They provide essential behavioral health supports, including trauma-informed care, healing, and resiliency services. They are often the bridge between students, families, and the resources they need to thrive. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend their monthly social worker professional development session, where I saw firsthand the deep commitment of our social workers to supporting students beyond academics. Their education, their dedication shines every day, and I am grateful to celebrate with them. At a time when our students are navigating increasing challenges, school social workers are showing up with care, compassion, and expertise. They advocate for resources, ensure our young people feel seen and heard, and provide the kind of support that challenges lives, that changes lives, and challenges us, too. We continue to invest in their work in uplifting their voices and ensuring that they have the resources they need. And we also talked about giving y'all a whole day off, right? We're going to talk about BTU about that. But while we're here today officially recognizing the School Social Worker Appreciation Day, this appreciation happens every single day. Their impact extends far beyond the walls of our schools, and our gratitude should match their ongoing commitment to our students. I'm going to pass it on to Counsel Louie Jean and then Counselor Anderson for a few words.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Thank you to our social workers who are doing yeoman's work in our schools. It is so incredibly important that we fight every day on the City Council to increase resources and support for you all who are standing in the gap for so many of our students who are coming to school, who are houseless, who need support. You all are really doing that work. And so I just want to commend all of you. Want to commend my neighbor right here, who's here. But thank you. You know, when I was in BPS, there weren't, there weren't these expansive social workers. And shout out to Counsel, former Counselor Anissa Sabi George, who really worked hard to make sure that we were getting more family supports in all of our schools. I want to see more social workers. I want to see more of all of you, because we know your caseloads are too, are too heavy, because our kids are walking into school every day with so many issues. So thank you for standing in the gap and standing up for all of our students. Thank you. I'm going to pass it on to Counsel Fernanda Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Mahia, for adding me to this work. And I wanted to congratulate all of you on your work. But I just want to address those of you at home. Social workers are not just, you know, people who work socially or with social issues. There are architects, there are attorneys, there are teachers, there are babysitters, there are everything. They become the mom, the dad, the grandpa, and the professional on every level. When you think about social work in terms of how they begin, from diagnosis to treatment planning to addressing, you know, measurable goals or objectives, you're talking about people who are truly engineers and thinking about thoughtfully and thoroughly about the issue and how to address that issue. And it takes a lot of heart. It takes a lot of time and endurance and creativity to be able to get through it. They work tireless hours. They work overtime without pay. As Counsel, President Louie Jean mentioned, they are overloaded with cases and oftentimes have to come out of pocket to do a lot of this work on their own. And I am well aware and appreciate you. It takes a social worker to connect, but to bridge that homeschool connection, to be able to provide the gaps that exist in our society, in our communities. And I thank you for it. Appreciate you.
Get the boss lady over here, Jenna.
I won't take long. Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Jenna Perifinck. I have the great honor of leading this department. And just want to thank you all for, one, having Counsel Mahia have us. She joined us yesterday and was so inspiring. We have a team of over 200 social workers. That's thanks to the investment of the city. Over five years ago, we have at least one social worker in every school. We are proud to represent our students. As you can see here, this is our district team. We have a team of over 70% of our social workers are, identify as BIPOC, and over 60% speak a different language or are multilingual. We are so proud of what we've built and how we can support the students and families of Boston. We thank you for your support. And thank you both. And to the women of the council, Happy Women's History Month. And thank you so much for having us and honoring. This is the first time we've ever been honored. And so for our social workers, it is really special. It's Social Work Month. So I just want to say thank you to them and Happy Social Work Month. Thank you.
All right, y'all. Quickly, a quick photo, because, you know, we, if we didn't take a photo, it didn't happen. Let's go, let's go. Thank you.
Make sure everyone has a window.
Thank you.
The people of Boston, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Thank you to our social workers. Thank you to members of our trans community. Thank you to Counsel Murphy and the Mary Woods, yeah, the Peggy Woods Dance Group. Those were all great presentations. We are now on to, oh, I'd like to amend the attendance record, Mr. Clerk, and reflect that Counsel Weber is now present and with us. Thank you. We're now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 5, 2025. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the March 5 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0641?
Docket Number 0641, message in order for your approval and appropriation in the total amount of $38,148,052 from fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Docket Number 0641 will be referred to the Committee on Community Preservation Act. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets Number 0642 and 0643?
Docket Number 0642, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $382,163.59 in the form of a grant for the Kari and Wagner Pfizer Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund the individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket Number 0643, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $140,000 in the form of a grant for the Uncornered Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund coaching, mentorship, and other workforce development training opportunities for at-risk violence-involved youth and re-entering citizens.
Thank you. Dockets Number 0642 and 0643 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets 0644 through 0647?
Docket Number 0644, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Lending Library for Almond Playground in Matapan, awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund the implementation, operation, and replenishment of a community recreation lending library in the Hunt-Almond Playground in the Matapan section of the City of Boston. Docket Number 0645, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Lending Library for the Mowgli Park, South Boston, awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund the implementation, operation, and replenishment of a community recreation lending library in the Mowgli Park in the South Boston section of the City of Boston. Docket Number 0646, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,000 in form of a grant for the Lending Library for Ringer Park at Alston, awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund the implementation, operation, and replenishment of the community recreation lending library in Ringer Park in Alston section of the City of Boston. Docket Number 0647, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Lending Library for the East Boston Greenway, East Boston, awarded by the Mass Development of, Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund the implementation, operation, and replenishment of a community recreation lending library at the East Boston Greenway in the East Boston section of the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. He has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for reading all those, Clerk. I'm just rising, asking my colleagues to suspend and pass these four separate grants. These are wonderful additions to our parks. And knowing that they're going to continue to fund the maintenance of programs like this is important. So I'm asking that we suspend and pass all four today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy seeks suspension and passage of Docket Number 0644. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Counsel Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 0645. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Counsel Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 0646. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Counsel Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 0647. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0648?
Docket Number 0648, message in order for your approval and order authorizing the City of Boston Streets Cabinet to enter into a contract for a period of up to 10 years for the services of an operator for the city's public bike share program, Blue Bikes. The contract term would begin in 2026. The City Council's permission is to enter into a contract of this type for a period of more than three years as required by Section 12 of Chapter 30B of the General Laws.
Thank you. Docket Number 0648 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0649?
Docket Number 0649, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Stanley McLaren as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 15, 2028.
Thank you. Docket Number 0649 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0650?
Docket number 0650, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kristin Hoffman as a member of the Monument Square, Lamont District Study Committee.
Thank you. Docket number 0650 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0651?
Docket number 0651, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding vehicles owned, leased, or otherwise utilized by the City of Boston filed on docket number 0490, passed by the City Council on February 12, 2025.
Thank you. Docket number 0651 will be referred to the Committee, will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0652 to 0654?
Docket number 0652, communication was received from Claire Kelly, Director of Intergovernmental Relations, regarding a written statement for reference of the mayor's testimony at the House Oversight and Government Reform Committee hearing in Washington, DC. Docket number 0653, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of February 26, 2025. And docket number 0654, communication was received from Councilor Santana regarding second call for urgent action to sustain the BPS Parent-Mentor Program operated by St. Joseph's Youth Programs.
Thank you. Dockets number 0652 to 0654 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0137?
Docket number 0137, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 8, 2025. Docket number 0137, in ordinance regarding employee safety within Boston's oil terminals submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass in a new draft. Docket number 0137 will be remanded back to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0393?
Docket number 0393, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,563,236.28 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 State Elder Lunch Program Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the City of Boston at a rate of $7.39 per meal for up to 358,679 meals.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities. You have the floor.
Thank you. The Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities held a hearing on February 5. In attendance was my co-chair, Councilor Braden, and we had absent letters from Councilor Worrell and Councilor Flynn. This matter was sponsored by Michelle Wu and was referred to the Committee on February 5. It is a state grant for the Elder Lunch Program, which is awarded through the Massachusetts Office of Elder Affairs. The committee discussed the allocation of the state grant to be admitted by the Age Strong Commission. We heard testimony from panelists, which included Emily Shea, Commissioner of the Age Strong Commission, and Melissa Carlson, who is the Senior Director of Programs and Partnerships, who is responsible for program oversight and monitoring for the elder nutrition program. The panel discussed the importance of this grant being one component of three funding sources for Age Strong's Mails on Whale program. The other two sources include Title III of the Older Americans Act and the Nutrition Service Incentive Program, and $300,000 in city funding. So the city has kicked in money in the past to make up the difference. The program partners with two organizations, Ethos and Greater Boston Chinese Golden Age Center. The Greater Boston Chinese Golden Age Center offers traditional Cantonese mails and operates its own mail delivery services at three locations, including one in Brighton and another one in Chinatown. Ethos works with the partners such as Spinelli's, City Fresh Foods, and Emily's Food Service to cook and deliver mails. Together, these funding sources cover about one-third of the program's total cost. The program provides a range of services, including home-delivered mails, congregant mails at 44 locations throughout Boston, nutritional education, assessment, and counseling. Additionally, there are 11 mail options available to meet the dietary and cultural needs of our older adults across the City of Boston. The panelists also discussed a reduction in funding last year in the FY '24 with the expectation of possibly further cuts to the federal funding this year. Last year's federal funding decrease amounted to approximately $880,000 with uncertainty surrounding this year's figures. Federal funding is allocated to states based on a formula, and the 2020 census data likely affected the funding distribution. Concerns were raised about the impact of these potential cuts, and strategies are being developed to mitigate them. The state is looking into ways to streamline the program, such as adjusting eligibility criteria and reducing waste. State and city funding remains crucial for this program's continued success. And I know we talked, Council Braden and I, about just keeping this, the communication open with Emily and the Age Strong Commission as we go into the budget season, making sure that if we do need to allocate either through an amendment or through the administration, just adding it on their own to make sure that our seniors' nutritional needs are not cut in any way. As the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. And at this time, my recommendation to the full council will be that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Council Murphy seeks, Council Murphy, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0393. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. This committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0393 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read together dockets number 0414 and 0128?
Docket number 0414, order for a hearing to audit the implementation and effectiveness of the 2014 Boston Trust Act. And docket number 0128, communication was received from Police Commissioner Michael A. Cox in accordance with Section 3 of the Boston Trust Act regarding civil immigration detainee results for calendar year 2024.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a hearing on March 10, 2025. I was joined by my colleagues, Councilor Ed Flynn, Councilor Enrique Pepe, Councilor John Fitzgerald, Councilor Erin Murphy, Councilor Julia Mahia, Council President Ruth Lee Jen, Council Benjamin Weber, Councilor Sharon Durkin, and Councilors Liz Braden. The lead sponsors for this was Councilor Mahia, Councilor Pepe, and Councilor Lee Jen. We heard testimony, we did have, we held, we heard from many people from the public, on public testimony, but we also had an amazing panel filled with so many experts and advocates in this field. We also were joined by Reverend Mariana White-Hammon, who joined us for grounding. And then we were joined by Amy Grunder, Director of State and Government Affairs with Mayor Coalition, Angela Palma, Women's Rights Organizer, was presentante, Suzanne Lee, educator, Michelle Etienne, Assistant Pastor, Voice of the Gospel Church, Dr. Nina Estrella Luna, founder of Estrella Luna Consulting, and Nivea Piña, who's a small business owner. I'm going to leave it to see if the lead sponsors want to say aye anything, but we had a productive conversation. I was very happy to see so many of my colleagues be present in order for us to be educated. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Santana. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor. What did I say? Oh, Murphy, apologies. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
I know it's St. Patrick's Day today.
It's the green.
I got the green.
It's the green. It's all of that. So morphing into each other. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
I know. She's trying to be like me. Okay. So, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair for hosting this and also for organizing it as quickly as you did. I think it really meant a lot to the community that they were able to show up the way that they did. So I just want to thank you and your office for making that happen. And I also just want to name that, you know, in the spirit in which we always lead, it was really helpful to have community here helping to help us understand that while we know that the mayor did an amazing job fighting on behalf of the Trust Act in DC, this is an opportunity for us to affirm that the Trust Act is working in the way that it should, and also giving an opportunity to those folks who are right now afraid to go to the hospital, afraid to go to church, afraid to send their kids to school, you know, afraid to go to work. All of those things are having unintended consequences on our undocumented loved ones, and I think it's really important to create space for those folks who are doing the work and/or living the realities to inform our thinking so that whatever we do decide to do in terms of strengthening the act, that we are leading with those who are living the reality. So I just want to thank everyone who showed up. And I also want to just acknowledge that we are going to have a series of hearings. We wanted to start off in grounding with community. Our hope is to then bring the administration, Boston Police Department, Boston Public Health Commission, BPS, and others into the fold, and have a series of hearings so that we allow each of those voices to kind of have their own space so that we can really get it right as we continue through this process. So I just want to thank our colleagues for their patience. I know that you were all expecting everyone to show up, and then we were like, surprise, we're switching things up. So I just want to thank you all for your patience around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. This docket, these dockets, dockets number 0414 and 0128 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0407?
Docket number 0407, message in order for your approval and ordinance for road safety and accountability for delivery providers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Clara Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Government Operations held a working session yesterday on March 11 on docket 0407. I was joined by Councilors Murphy, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Brandon Anderson, Durkin, Lee Jen, Weber, Mahia, and Santana. Did I say everyone? Flynn. Flynn, I don't know if I said Flynn. We were joined by the administration, Chief Franklin Hodge, who's the Chief of Streets, and Daniel Lander, who's the Policy Advisor within the mayor's office. I am keeping this docket in committee. I won't bury the lead, but what I will say for the record is that the committee went line by line through about half of the docket and reviewed revisions produced on behalf of myself and colleagues in partnership with advocates and industry representatives. During the working session, we reviewed and discussed implications of excluding grocery and convenience stores, what constitutes an adequate threshold of orders per week to capture larger third-party delivery companies who have a disproportionate impact on our streets and neighborhoods. We also discussed various insurance minimums currently mandated by the state for vehicle liability, bodily injury, injury, and personal property, and how we are going beyond the required threshold from the state. There were questions posed by my colleagues to better clarify active status for third-party service providers, as well as liability coverage, as well as liability coverage. Council Weber, based on his litigation experience, recommended that we embed protections for workers so they are not on the hook, nor are their wages for insurance coverage compensation. We started to discuss data reporting requirements and the very real need to ensure anonymity to protect consumer privacy. There was also a conversation about moving the frequency of data produced by these companies to BTD from monthly to quarterly, and ensuring commercial sensitivity and protection of proprietary information from these companies. There is way more work to do. I hope to have a working session forthcoming in the next couple of weeks. This is a 60-day order, so we do have to pass this by the beginning of April. And so again, I do look forward to having one or more working sessions to make sure that we get this in the right place. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clara Zapata. This docket, docket number 040, will remain in committee. Okay, Mr. Clerk, you've got some reading to do.
Yep.
Would you please read dockets number 0397, 0398, 0401, 0403, 0404, 0449, 0450, 0451, 0452, and 0455?
Docket number 0397, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $702,244.22 in the form of a grant for the RDEA Program for Field CY24 Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants, as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket number 0398, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $626,466.57 in the form of a grant for the Kari and WIOA Dislocated Workers Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a program to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket number 0401, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $254,921 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Activities Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a program that focuses primarily on out-of-school youth between ages 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment. Docket number 0403, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $109,271.70 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Dislocated Worker Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individualized career services and training services for dislocated workers to rejoin the workforce as early as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket number 0404, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $94,089 in the form of a grant for the Wagner Pizer Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants, as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket number 0449, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2294,289 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a comprehensive youth employment program to serve eligible youth ages 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment. Docket number 0450, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,761.212.70 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Adult Activities awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund services to help job seekers access employment, education, skill training, apprenticeships, and support services. Docket number 0451, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,76,177 in the form of a grant for the Wagner Pizer Program awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund the individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants, as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket number 0452, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $983,445.30 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Dislocated Workers Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a program to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket number 0455, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Kari and Regional Planning Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund regional planning efforts to address the creation of regional pipeline program for high-demand industries and occupations in alignment with regional planning priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. If I could clap for you, I would. That was a lot to read. The Chair recognizes Council Weber, the Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, and you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam President. You know, I know everyone knows this already, but the total number of all these grants is $7,247,60.79. So, but, you know, yesterday, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development held a hearing on these 10 federal labor grants that are before us. These grants were awarded by the Department of Labor to Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by our Office of Workforce Development. The dockets were sponsored by the mayor and referred to the committee in February. February. I'd like to thank Joseph Lee, Katie Gahl, from the Office of Workforce Development, and Neil Sullivan, and Angela McCabe from the Boston Private Industry Council, you know, all for their participation in yesterday's hearing. I'd also like to thank my colleagues who attended the hearing, Councilor Ed Flynn, Madam President, Rusi Louis Jen, and Councilor Gabriela Coletta Zapata. We were also helped by our invaluable central staff, Megan Caru Hedo and Ethan Vara, and we also received letters of absence from councilors Brian Worrell and Enrique Pepin. In 2014, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act was signed into law. It is designed to improve, you know, our nation's public workforce system to help people, including youth and those facing significant barriers to employment, access high-quality jobs and careers. The cool kids call it WEOA. The WEOA helps job seekers access employment, education, training, and support services, and matches job seekers with employers seeking skilled workforce. During the hearing, we heard that these grants, which include WEOA grants, essentially support mass higher Boston career centers. One is downtown, another one is in Newby and Square, provide services to people seeking work. This includes people on unemployment insurance and other dislocated workers, and it helps them with career counseling workshops, career fairs, and training opportunities. Just by way of background, you know, we heard in a hearing in January that the state takes in federal funds to support 16 workforce boards. Here in Boston, we have two of those boards. They're both housed in the Boston PIC, and PIC selects organizations that are chartered as Boston career centers. Here, we've got one that's managed by the Jewish Vocational Services in downtown, and another that's being managed by ABCD in Newby and Square. We heard that these funds will be used, you know, to, for specific training pathways. Some were mentioned in the hearing. They include ESOL pathways, pharmacy technician training, and bridging programs for those looking for some additional skills, including digital literacy skills, computer networking training, and adult basic education. And a portion of these grants will fund training vouchers for adults, as well as one grant before us, which is for regional workforce training for in-demand jobs. Specifically, out of that 7.2 million, 2.2 million will be used for youth job training. We will be focusing on people seeking jobs who are 18 to 24. You know, I think we've heard in this council a lot about how we need to support our youth in terms of job training and access to quality jobs. This will help with that. We were told that this funding helps thousands of people seeking jobs. Just last year, there were, these worker centers took in 15,000 job seekers and helped over 13,600 find quality jobs. And out of those, many of whom, many of those job seekers were veterans who, as we all know, need more support than ever with our federal government seemingly withdrawing all their support. These grants will also support administrative oversight for the programs that are provided by the Office of Workforce Development, which is required to oversee the grant agreements that exist between the office and the career centers to ensure that they are keeping with all Department of Labor and state regulations. We were told that these grants need to be spent within a two-year timeframe. And in January, you know, we held a hearing on a one-stop career center grant in the amount of $860,000. That was approved by this body, which also provides funding for our mass higher Boston career centers to supply some of the services that we are talking about today. Given the information we learned in January, as well as yesterday, as Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, I thank you for sitting through this long speech and very long docket reading. But I recommend acceptance of the committee report and passage of these dockets before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Weber, and thank you for going through that. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0397. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0397 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0398. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0398 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0401. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0401 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0403. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0403 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0404. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0404 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0449. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0449 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0450. All in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0450 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0451. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0451 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0452. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0452 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0455. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0455 has passed. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Notice our timer is not here. It is broken, but I trust all my colleagues know the time limits. So, Mr. Clerk, could you please read into the record docket number 0655?
Docket number 0655, councilors Mejia and Braden offer the following: resolution declaring Boston a sanctuary city for transgender persons and all members of the LGBTQIA2S+ community.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank my colleagues for standing with us earlier today. And I think that the community that was here is really grateful for your participation. And we just want to just thank you all for standing in solidarity and support. And before I go into my written remarks, I just, I want to just level set here real quick. So, I think it's important for us to recognize that we all have a calling, and we all have a purpose in life. And I think that my work here in the city of Boston started off in the public health space, working with young people, with Bagley, Boston Glass, JRI Health, AIDS Action Committee, MAC. I have been here. I have done that. And even when I moved to New York, I worked with the Hetrick Martin Institute, the home of the Harvey Milk School, who was the first out LGBTQ+ person to represent us in Congress. And so, for me, this work, contrary to what others may believe, is not about a political posture or an opportunity to seize a moment. This work for me is rooted in my historical work that I've done here in the city of Boston, and working alongside the trans community, and working alongside our LGBTQ+ loved ones. And so, like, I want to stand here with that affirmation, and making sure that we recognize what this moment is all about, is being a voice and a microphone for those folks who are too afraid to speak up for themselves. So, in that spirit, and that's right, we know who we're here to fight for. In that spirit, as I mentioned earlier today, one of my teammates is from the transgender community and was afraid to travel with us to DC in January. She was afraid because of the hostility and the fear of something happening to her in her time in DC. This was in January. Shortly after that, we met with a group of other trans Latina women who were experiencing the same fear in that time together. We all came to realize that we needed to seize this moment to give folks an opportunity to demonstrate their voice and to fight back. And so, that's how we ended up organizing what we're doing here today. And let me just be clear. This particular sanctuary, this particular resolution was going to be filed back on February the 12th. But due to feedback from my colleagues about the heat that Boston was already taking regarding the Trust Act, in consultation with community, we decided to wait. But after a few initial meetings, the trans Latinas and other advocates from the community folks, they said that they did not want to wait any longer. And so, we had Worcester and Cambridge that have recently filed resolutions. And while this might be symbolic, I also think it's important for us to validate the concerns that were raised by those who sent emails urging us not to pursue this resolution. I understand and respect that in many cases elected officials pass symbolic resolutions and leave it at that. I too believe that this moment is demanding much more from us. This resolution, as we heard earlier, is the first step. It's an opportunity for us to come together in agreement as a body that we acknowledge that the work must be done collectively, and that this moment is more than just a symbolic resolution. I also believe that we can, we can't just rely on government to fix everything. That is why, in addition to maximizing the power that we do have as a body in this chamber and work towards an ordinance, I also plan to continue working alongside the community to build innovative infrastructure and mutual aid that helps keep communities safe. Those discussions are being had and have already been led by folks that have spoken here earlier today. We didn't file this to check off a box and hang on our working boots. We filed this because it is necessary for the harder, more concrete work that is to come. Frankly, we don't have conversations about our trans LGBTQIA2S+ community very often here on the council, especially ones that center our trans communities of color, because those conversations are oftentimes controversial. Though controversial, they are necessary, especially with this new presidential administration that has taken office. So, how are we going to start those conversations in meaningful ways without affirming everyone here in this body that believes that A, transgender and LGBTQIA2+ people are valued members of our community, and B, that they deserve a safe and respect in all spaces and places in the city? Let's affirm that today by passing this, that we can all get into agreement about the very basic principles, and then really dig into the heels about the real work that still needs to be done. And I want to acknowledge and thank Councilor Braden for not only joining us in this council, but making history as the first woman to be out. And when you talk about being out and being proud, you bring your full self into this chamber, and you let so many other folks who are sitting at home, oftentimes unseen and unheard, that you see them and that you affirm them. So, I just want to thank you, Councilor Braden, for standing up and demonstrating your courage in this moment. And I know it might be scary for some, but I think that this is an opportunity, not for symbol, but for an opportunity for us to begin the work. And I also want to thank Council Santana, who also has been a strong voice in this space. And while you may have not joined in this particular cosponsor, I know that your heart and the work that you've been doing in this space is recognized and valued. And I look forward to working alongside you as we work with the coalition to draft up the ordinance so that you are helping to lead that conversation. So, looking forward to that partnership. And with that, I am going to thank you again for being here. Y, porque soy latina, voy a hablar algo bien breve. I took a little bit longer, sorry. Es que bien importante que nosotros nos reconocemos, que todo lo que tiene que ver con la comunidad trans aquí, particularmente en la ciudad de Boston, hay muchas personas que son hispanas, que tienen miedo, y por eso que estamos aquí hoy, demostrando que nosotros nos vamos a seguir trabajando con miedo. Tenemos que declarar que nosotros de verdadmente estamos aquí para hacer el trabajo, y lo doy gracias a Scarlett, que es parte del equipo mío, que fue la que me dejó entender el miedo que la comunidad tenía, y por eso que vamos a seguir trabajando juntas, para asegurarnos que todos nuestros seres queridos se sientan cómodos aquí. Gracias.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Thank you, Councilor Mejia. I'm going to call on my rest, my colleagues, as I saw the lights came on. But I want to say that we have been joined in this chamber by former city council president and former city councillor from the great District of District 6, Matt O'Malley. Thank you for being with us here today. And I'd like you to know that a multiple people were like, "Matt O'Malley's here. Matt O'Malley's here." So, yes, I saw him walk in, and so, you are here. Thank you for being here with us. Okay. The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Mejia, for including me on this important resolution. I do understand the debate that went back and forward about whether this was the right time or not the right time to bring this forward. We are living in unprecedented times. It's a very, very difficult time, very uncertain. There's a huge amount of uncertainty for so many people in this country at this moment. Many of our neighbors are feeling, many of our neighbors are feeling unsafe and insecure for various reasons. There may be their immigration status. There may be their gender identity. There may be veterans who have been fired from the federal government and federal workers. It may be our young people. There's so, so many people who are afraid in this moment. And, you know, I think this resolution addresses a particular concern that we need to elevate and raise up. During the election, and since, there's been an incredible escalation in anti-trans rhetoric and violence that has caused incredible stress and anxiety to our LGBTQIA+ community, and especially to our trans brothers and sisters. I think we have had a lot of emails of support, and also emails of concern about this issue. Fifty-eight emails altogether. That's a huge number in a very short space of time. But, you know, as I mentioned earlier, everyone has to have the, be able to live in dignity and safety without fear for their lives, without fear for their children's lives, without fear for whether their young trans child in the school system will be bullied or threatened, whether you lose your housing because you identify as trans, whether you lose your job. In Massachusetts, we have laws on the books to protect, but it doesn't mean that folks aren't afraid. And then also, in the other context, there's this intersectionality, trans and black, trans and a non-documented immigrant. There's so many concerns in this moment that they're causing a huge amount of stress, and I really applaud Councilor Mejia for bringing this forward. As she mentioned, this is a symbolic move. Right now, a resolution is a non-binding resolution, but we hope that we can strengthen and affirm our support for our LGBTQIA+ community across the city, and really demonstrate that our support by some tangible, practical measures that will help improve their safety and help them feel more secure here in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And I rise, seeing that just yesterday Representative Sarah McBride, who was the first open transgender member of Congress, duly elected member of Congress representing Delaware, was misgendered by a ranking member of the committee from Texas. And our colleague of the Massachusetts delegation, Bill Keating, the ranking member of that committee, I think summed it up perfectly of our collective dismay and horror when he asked, "Have you no decency?" And this is what we're talking about when this country is regressing. We are losing actively our morality to not respect the dignity and humanity of others. It takes nothing for us to treat others how they want to be treated, and to just to let them exist the way they want to exist in the world. And so, I appreciate the intentions of this, of this resolution. I am going to vote in favor of it. And I say all of this just to provide context that... And I say all of this just to provide context that we are up against what seems like the lyeth in this fight of what's happening down in DC. And I have had to remind myself many times in the last two months that we are all on the same team here. We are all on the same team and we have to work together. I support the intentionality of this resolution. The LGBTQIA+ community, and I apologize if I missed a few, I'm just reading down what I wrote, they are calling on us and they deserve to know that their elected leadership stands in solidarity with them and supports them and their right to exist how they want to exist. What this community, based on the emails that we've gotten, and I did get over 500 emails, what this community is also calling for and deserves is more than just words, they are demanding action. They are holding us accountable to do our jobs and legislate real, meaningful protections. And that is within our power as a city. We have done hard things before, like the Trust Act, and we can do it again. They are calling on us to utilize our budgetary authority and put our money where our mouth is and invest in protections and invest in programming for our trans youth in BPS, for example. I am committed to doing that. Again, we are all aligned and we agree that Boston should be a sanctuary city for trans individuals, and everybody wants trans folks to feel safe and to live their lives. We might have a difference of opinions as to what the initial steps of a holistic strategy look like, but I'm committed to doing the work. And I'm happy to hear, pleased to hear that there are efforts to move beyond just a non-binding resolution. What I would want to see moving forward is just ensuring that folks that are in states that are disproportionately impacted by some of these horrific policies in Tennessee and Texas, that they don't see that Boston is now a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ community and they think that these protections are there for them. So it is incumbent upon us to move expeditiously on legislation to get that done. And as the Chair of Government Operations, I commit to doing that with you and in partnership with you and all of my colleagues. Again, we've demonstrated that we can do this, the Trust Act, and this body voted on Jack's Law. I'm so proud of Jack Imbergamo, my former staff member, who held me accountable to do something in the face of requiring their legal name to be utilized in the city of Boston rather than their preferred name. But that's something that we had put forth and the mayor's office had signed into law. And so this moment does require, yes, visibility and public affirmations, but it also requires us to utilize the power that we have to make a difference. Again, I'm committed to doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Councillor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. I want to rise and first thank the lead sponsors, Councillor Mejia and Councillor Breeden, for bringing this forward. I do want to thank and acknowledge the community members that we have here today. Thank you so much for joining us here today and for your remarks earlier. You know, since this was introduced earlier this week, I know how many of my colleagues have received so many emails from community. And I just want to explain just a little bit of my thinking over the last few days. You know, I was, and I had a productive conversation with Councillor Mejia yesterday and really appreciated your proactiveness in that. You know, I was very much debating if I should block this resolution, not because I don't support it, because I absolutely do. And I know my colleagues here know that I've been very intentional about making sure that our LGBTQ community is centered around the work that my office does and where communications with community members, if not on a weekly basis, on a daily basis, about policies that we should be able to champion. The concerns that I heard is, you know, similar to my colleague, Councillor Coletta Zapata, is that, you know, I absolutely believe that Boston should be a sanctuary city, not for just all residents, but especially for our most marginalized residents. And that includes our trans community right now, especially since being attacked by our federal government. I, what I was fearful of is the not actually having protections on the ground to meet that moment, right? And I was fearful of so many things that can happen without having those true protections. So, you know, I was really advocating for this to be sent to committee. I wanted us to be able to have conversations with my colleagues, with community, and to actually come up with language, legal language and protections that actually put protections on the ground for our most marginalized communities, which includes, again, our trans residents. After having several conversations, including with my colleagues, I will not be blocking this vote today. I will, you know, I want, I think, I understand the intent behind it. Again, I don't agree necessarily with the process here. I really thought that we should put protections in place and use this resolution as a celebration for that. And, but after talking to my colleagues, I understand that there's an ordinance and more work to be done. I'm committed to doing that work, I'm committed to doing that work alongside my colleagues, alongside with community members. And ultimately, what I really want to make sure is that Boston is a safe city for everyone, a safe city where people can wake up, live their lives, be able to work, be able to, you know, do fun activities and go out and not live in fear. You know, I had concerns about, you know, this particular, doing this particular resolution without having those protections in place, but, you know, I'm committed to doing that work, holding us here accountable for that. And I really hope that this is an opportunity for our council to really come together. Just in the few, last few weeks, we've been fighting for our immigrant communities. We had to come and rally together. Right now, our LGBTQ community is being attacked, and we need to make sure that Boston is a safe city for all of them. And I really hope that every single city council at large, district, you know, we can really come together, come up with language, come up with protections and laws to take care of our most vulnerable. So with that, I will be also supporting the resolution today. I will be voting in support of it. But just wanted to share my concerns, because I know there are people out there right now that can't speak, right, who are living in fear and, you know, who feel like they don't have a voice. And I know that they, you know, I think we're all on the same page as the ultimate outcome. And, you know, we want to make, just make sure that the city of Boston is safe for everyone. But I just wanted to make sure that my concerns were heard so that way we can work together as a council to make sure that, again, our most vulnerable residents are protected. So I just really want to thank, again, Councillor Mejia for your leadership in this, working with community, and, again, your proactiveness and being able to reach out to me and just partnerships. So thank you, Madam President, and I look forward to doing the work.
Thank you, Councillor Santana. The Chair recognizes Councillor Fernand Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I, so I got a bunch of emails in under 100, not up to 500, but under 100 from, I counted them actually, from certain communities. And then I did some research and looked up, next time, you guys, don't leave me out if you're sending 500 to Councillor Coletta, send 500 to me, too. I, 550. I do think that, you know, there are different things happening here. One, I want to thank, and I'm sorry if I don't have the proper name of your organization, I want to thank the group that sent me the emails. I think that in your good intention of, you know, in your fight, in your bravery for advocating for your community, you had good intentions in terms of, you know what, we're sick and tired, of being sick and tired, we want action now. And in fact, your intentions should be pure, and if they are, don't be pretentious, don't posture, you know, don't do the political posturing. And I saw all of that, you know, in language. I don't think they were necessarily inflated, rather, in your moment of passion, in your good intention, I think you meant to say, "This is absolutely ridiculous. We should not be fighting for our rights to just have human rights. We should not be fighting, we should not be just saying, 'Here's a non-binding resolution' just so that we can voice our position on things." So shout out to the group that sent me. I've never heard of you. I did research and I saw that a lot of people that were in this group are also councillor staff. And so I did appreciate that there was camaraderie here in City Hall within the LGBTQIA2+ community. And then in terms of, you know, Councillor Mejia pursuing this further, you know, shout out to Councillor Mejia for your bravery for saying, "In a moment where I have to make hard decisions, it is what it is. I'm going to call out the controversy within the community, but I'm also going to respect both sides and be able to say, 'I'm with you. This is not pretentious. This is real, and I'm going to fight because I believe in it, but I'm going to stand strong and not waver my position in this.'" Then there's the part with, you know, I, Councillor Coletta, I really admired your diplomacy today in terms of how you framed why you were doing what you were doing. And it does take us as councillors to be consolidators of community and be able to find the proper language to be able to do that in a diplomatic way. It means that we say, "I feel you and I feel you." Right now, though, there was absolutely nothing wrong with filing a resolution because we do this all the time. Sometimes we say, "This needs attention, it's a resolution." And then later we say, "We need more time to craft something that becomes law. So allow us the time to do that." But because of the urgency behind this issue, I'm going to stand up and support. And I heard that loud and clear, Councillor Coletta. And so in leveraging back and forth with councillors, it is difficult, and I want folks at home to understand, you get different communities saying things. Sometimes in a privileged attitude of this sort of divisive, "We can speak for all of this community," and within that category, you tend to like divide categories, whether it be the black trans community versus the white trans community. And then there's all of this divisiveness. And so in this time, I think I heard you loud and clear, Councillor Coletta, in terms of how we must stand together as human beings, but with our brothers and sisters and other in the LGBTQIA+2 community, that we, in this moment, please understand the intention and be patient. We are with you and we support you. And so then there's the other part where, don't send, you know, emails to folks in terms of, sometimes people within our family are struggling with their own identity and are afraid of coming out, and they're closeted. And then there's this thing about, "If I take this position, what does that mean for this person that is not ready to deal with such things?" So be sensitive in your approach. Understand that we are together. And, Councillor Mejia, I thank you once again for your bravery and for your leadership and for your sincerity. It may not be as polished, not yours, but all of ours. It may not be as polished as a community needs it to be or as forceful, but I hope this is a good start. I thank you for your allyship. I thank you for your fight and for being who you are. Chastity, we go way back. And I love you. I want you to know that you have a friend in me, an ally in me, hopefully a fighter in me, and will continue to stand for you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Flynn. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say thank you to Councillor Mejia, to Councillor Santana, and to Councillor Breeden as well for their long-time support of and advocacy of the LGBTQ community, probably the three strongest city councillors in support of civil rights. So I want to acknowledge my three colleagues and everyone else as well. I have been a strong supporter of the LGBTQ+ community. As a veteran, I have supported LGBTQ+ veterans with Boston Veterans Commissioner Rob Santiago. We advocated for those who have an other-than-honorable discharge status, which makes them ineligible for benefits if you don't have an honorable discharge. In fact, I think myself and Rob were the first people maybe in the country that advocated for this. In 2021, many of you may not have been here at the time, but Councillor Breeden and I also passed a resolution on the council to support Always Ask, Proud to Tell Day, to mark the 10th anniversary of the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell. When far-right groups made bomb threats and other threats directed at the Boston Children's Hospital, I met with the hospital team, stood with them, talked with the staff, patients, youth, and parents who were under attack. I also have continued to support the important work of the Fenway Community Health Center, who provide exceptional health care to many in our communities, including in my district and District Two. Fenway Health is the largest HIV care provider in New England, providing HIV/AIDS care for the LGBTQ community and others in the community, as does the South End Community Health Center as well. I represent a large LGBTQ community in the South End and in South Boston, and I continue to be a friend and advocate for neighbors in the community who need my support. I have a strong record of support for my neighbors. But I would like to learn more about what this resolution does as it relates to sanctuary cities, the Trust Act, what impact it has on city services, what role the city departments will play. And I don't want to be disagreeable, I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody, but it's just something I would like to have before I vote on. I'm not going to block this, but I do think I, and only speaking of me, I need to do my due diligence. That's not questioning anyone else's due diligence, it's just my due diligence. I want to know what impact this will have. And I also acknowledge the emails I received from the LGBTQ community as well and from city council staffers that asked me about the process and would this be blocked. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Durkin. Councillor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much to Councillor Mejia. I just kept thinking about this morning, it's fitting that there are two things on the docket today from the city council, because the conversation around trans rights and what our role is in advocating for the trans community is so important right now. But I kept thinking about the question of what does sanctuary mean? I don't feel like we are a sanctuary city for trans and LGBTQIA individuals when our rent is high, when you can't afford your groceries, when you can't get a PCP, when your healthcare research funding is being stripped by the federal government, when research is being defunded based on DEI priorities. Last year, we put forward, Councillor Santana and Breeden and I, a resolution around Trans Day of Visibility for the first time in city council history, because the city council had always done Trans Day of Remembrance. We had always talked about people, we had always talked about trans people in their memory and never talked about trans people who are out and proud and living and happy and accomplishing things. So next week, we'll be doing that. And I think the fact that we're prioritizing this, we're prioritizing that conversation of having people out and happy and proud and visible is incredible, but we must build housing. We must get the cost of groceries down. Like, we have to work on the issues that we can impact in the city council to actually impact people's quality of life, because we aren't a sanctuary if you can't get a PCP. We aren't a sanctuary if you can't access therapy. We aren't a sanctuary if you can't get access to all the resources you need. And so with this piece of paper comes that responsibility. And I think we all are really taking that. And I think we all are really taking that and wearing that and appreciating that. And I just want to thank our mayor, when she was a city councilor, when she sat in these seats, the first thing that she put on the agenda when she was a city councilor was making sure that city workers had the right to gender-affirming care. That's been enshrined. That was our mayor's first priority when she was on the city council. So I appreciate where we are, what we've done, the history of what this council has done, but we've got to take it a step further. And quality of life means access to basic human needs and services. And it also means we're fixing the bricks on your streets. You're not falling down when you're getting out. And I know there's a lot of great work happening on Beacon Hill right now in that respect. But our, our world is so micro, but it's also so macro. And I think we have to appreciate what our role is in all of these things. So I want to see every single member of this body supporting housing in their districts. We need housing. We need to expand who is paying tax money. We need to grow our city population. Like, that is our role. So I, it's, we need to be able to connect the dots. And that's what I'm feeling here. How do we create a sanctuary without appreciating all the dots that need to be connected to actually make this a great place to live for everyone? Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Orrell. Council Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm sure I should thank Council Mahia, Braden, also Council Santana, and also Council Coletta Zapata for your leadership on this matter. We should not pretend that this attack is new or trans people were not feeling under attack prior to this year, but it's undeniable that it is more urgent now. We must meet hate with love. We also must meet hate with action. This resolution is the love, and I look forward to working with my colleagues and the advocates on the action. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orrell. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
I'd just like to say briefly thank you to my colleagues for the, the passion and really listening to community. I see all of my colleagues as in their advocacy of having listened to community. And my hope is that we continue to work together in partnership. You know, I think I've talked to a number of people, like every community, right, like it's a family. You got that cousin who maybe you don't get along with, but you got to figure out how you love each other and work together. So my hope is that the family, right, that the trans family, that the LGBTQ plus family works together on showing us the way on building what true safety looks like for these communities. I was thinking about every time when I'm in Alston Brighton thinking about, you know, and I, it's a, to, my, my colleague from District ate her point about remembrance, but I'm always remembering Rita Hester. I'm always remembering because you can't look away. And I love that, that, that mural on the side of Jackson Man. It's so beautiful, so colorful, and at the same time so tragic that we can't look away. So I think the call right now is really to not look away and to really lean into the issues that present themselves. And I hope that we can function as a body, as a family, with all our cousins who have different opinions and different ideas and different strategies to figure out how we work together for the most vulnerable. We're doing our part in every single way. I want to thank my colleagues. We were able, and, and city council staff and public facilities. We now have on our staff side gender-neutral bathrooms for everyone. It's work that we are trying to do in my office to make sure that everyone feels welcome, right? We are talking about creating safety for what safety looks like for all of our communities, whether that's our immigrant communities, whether that's our trans community, you know? And everyone belongs here. You belong here. And I, I know that this is symbolic and there's more work to do. And we are looking to the community, the family, to show us the way and the work that we got to do. So thank you for being here. If no one else would like to speak on this matter, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, World? Please add the chair. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number 0655? Oh, Councilors Mahia and Braden, expansion of the rules and adoption of docket number 0655. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0655. Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn?
No.
Council Flynn, no. Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mahia?
C.
Council Mahia, C. Council Murphy? Council Murphy, yes. Council Pepe?
Yes.
Council Pepe, yes. Council Santana?
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber?
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Orrell?
Yes.
Council Orrell, yes. Docket number 0655 has received 12 votes in the affirmative and one no.
Thank you. Docket number 0655 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0656?
Docket number 0656, Council Mahia, offer the following. Resolution declaring March 12, 2025 as School Social Worker Appreciation Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Mahia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing community to experience this. I really think it's important for us to demonstrate how important it is for us to show up for folks, and you all just did that. So I really do appreciate it, especially you, Council Santana. I know you grappled with it, and we see you. So thank you. So I would like to thank the president for allowing our office to do two presentations today. And I also would like to add both Council Louie Jean and Council Anderson as original co-sponsors.
Council Fernandez Anderson is so added. I am, Council Mahia seeks expansion of the rules. Add myself as the third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections. Council, Council President Louie Jean is so added. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you to my colleagues for standing alongside our office in recognizing School Social Worker Appreciation Day and for uplifting the incredible work of BPS social workers. Their commitment to our students is evident, and it is important that we continue to show up for them just as they show up for our young people every day. In our office, we've taken steps to inspire the next generation of social workers. In 2023 and 2022, we launched a pilot mental health ambassadors program at the Burke. And now it's expanded to the Madison Park, which they're going to be initiating their first day of self-care at Madison Park. This initiative helps students see themselves in the field and encourages them to consider social work as a future career. Right now, more than ever, we need to commit to supporting our youth as they navigate an increasingly complex world. And investing in school social workers means investing in the well-being of our students. And I look forward to continuing this work alongside my colleagues in our community. And while this is a day declaring March 12, 2025 as School Social Worker Appreciation Day, I believe that the work that social workers do day in and out is the front, they are the frontline workers of our Boston Public Schools. They're the ones who are, the, the ones who have to carry the trauma that so many of our kids bring in their backpacks. They're the ones who oftentimes go home and still carry that work with them. And so I think it's important for us to not only celebrate and acknowledge them today and every day, I also think it's really important that in this climate that we're in, they are carrying so much. And it's important for us to uplift them. And to Council Coletta's point earlier today in regards to the sanctuary resolution that we just passed, I think it's important that during budget season, we really utilize this opportunity for us to advocate for and on behalf of our social workers. And so let our budget reflect our values and our resolutions. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Council Mahia. Okay, thank you. And I want, I, it was beautiful that we had social workers here during social work, social, social work a month. I worked in deep partnership with them, and I think it's important that we continue to invest in our social workers. I was, a lovely presentation. I wanted to state that, yes, it is usually two presentations. I have a snafu in my office, but it was really beautiful, all the presentations that we had today, from our Irish step dancers to the trans community, to our social workers. So I'm really glad that we were able to include everyone and have everyone feel celebrated. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, World. Councilors Mahia, Fernandez Anderson, and Louie Jean's expansion of the rules and passage of docket number 0656. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Before we move on to personnel orders, would anyone like to add their name or put forward a motion to change a vote on, well, on anything while they were out of chambers? No? Okay. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel order?
Docket number 0657, Council Louie Jean for Council Durkin.
The chair moves to pass the docket number 0657. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The personnel order has passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone pulling anything from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm hoping to pull docket 0589 from the Government Operations Committee on page 7.
Mr. Clerk, do you have it?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 0589. Message in order for your approval, our revised Home Rule Petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law: An Act Relative to Creation of a Branch of the Boston Public Library Within an Affordable Housing Development in the Dorchester Section of the City of Boston."
Absent objection. The motion of the committee chair is granted, and the docket is properly before the body. Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the sake of transparency to my colleagues, there was a small typo, typo on the docket within the title, which accidentally stated the wrong neighborhood, but the clerk's office has corrected that error. Thank you. This project will create 33 units of affordable homeownership and has been awarded funding from the Mayor's Office of Housing. This Home Rule Petition has been previously approved by the council and was sent up to the State House last year. The legis, the legislation passed the House but not the Senate. This legislation allows for a public-private partnership to build housing and libraries together. The Upphams Corner Library Project is continuing to move along, but this Home Rule Petition is needed quickly to keep the project on track. Again, this docket was originally introduced in the council on June 23, 2023, and was passed by this body on November 13, 2023. The House passed this legislation on December 23, and then unfortunately, by December 31, the Senate took no further action. So I am asking for my council, my council colleagues' support in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. Council Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I can actually recall back when the Office of Economic Development was first created. This is one of the first things Chief John Barrows took under to try and accomplish with the idea of partnering civic use with housing. And so when you look at, and especially around the area of Upphams Corner that could use some of the buildings there and open lots, could use some of this redevelopment when you think about housing as well as education and a safe, a safe space for learning. This is kind of a no-brainer. So I've worked very closely with Council Orrell on this as well, Senator Collins, and others, and we are in deep support of this project. And so I hope it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I get the docket number?
0589.
0589, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Council Coletta Zapata seeks passage of docket number 0589. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay, we are now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. Three personnel and one communication. We will take a vote to add these late file matters onto, into the record. All in favor of adding these late file matters into the record, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These matters have been added to the record. Mr. Clerk, could you please read them into the record?
Personnel orders from Council Louie Jean regarding central staff and council staff. Second personnel order, Council Louie Jean for office staff. And the third personnel order, Council Louie Jean for office staff.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add these, all, all in favor of adding these, we are taking a vote on these late file personnel matters. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These dockets have passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the late file communication into the record?
Communication from Councilor Sharon Durkin regarding the approval by the zoning commission of a text amendment regarding Bullfedge Triangle.
Thank you. This matter will be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there is there's, okay, okay. That there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Upcoming birthdays, I want to give a shout out to Julie Ryan and Carly Johnson. Happy birthday. Announcements for this coming weekend, you know, that the St. Patrick's Day Parade is on Sunday. I hope that everyone enjoys and has a good time and remains safe. The chair recognizes Council Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Tomorrow, March 13, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at The Haven in Jamaica Plain, they're having an Ignite the Future event with Spark. Hope people will check that out. And for anyone interested in signing up for the Shamrock Shootout in West Roxbury, which is taking place March 29, there's a sign up tomorrow from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Cora Pub in West Roxbury. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I know Council Durkin mentioned it earlier, but I just wanted to say it again. I mean, next Wednesday, in partnership with Council Durkin, we're going to be having a transgender day of visibility reception right here at City Hall from 11 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And hope that my colleagues can join. And hopefully, I know we're going to have a lot of community members there and some good eat. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Santana. Okay. The chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata, and then Council Pepe, and then Council Orrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be brief, and you mentioned for folks to stay safe this holiday, the Boston Police Department has just put out a Stay Safe on Spring Break, Beware of Spiked Drinks and Reported Incidents. They are encouraging students to be vigilant and protect themselves from drink spiking. Colorless, odorless, and tasteless drugs like Rohphenol or Roofies, GHB, and Ketamine can be secretly placed in beverages, leading to disorientation, confusion, and unconsciousness. There's a series of steps that you can take. I'll just list three. Always have your drinks served directly from a bartender or server. Keep your drink inside at all times. Never leave it untended. And if you leave it at your table, or if you need to leave your table, take your drink with you even to the restroom. And if you believe that you've been the victim of a drink spiking or any other criminal activity, to report the incident as soon as possible to 911. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. The chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
President, this Saturday is going to be the Roswell Women's Business Group showcase at the substation on Saturday from 9 to 12 p.m. This is in, this is in honor to showcase all of our women-owned businesses all across Roswell. So I invite my at-large counselors to come by and, and show your support. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Orrell. Council Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is just the announcement from the Ways and Means Committee. We're going to be hosting a public testimony session on March 24 at 6 p.m. It's going to be at the Pilot School on Columbia Road. So I'm just, I'm asking councilors to help spread the word so that community voice can be part of this conversation, part of the budget conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. What school again?
Um, March 24 at 6 p.m. at the Frederick Pilot.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The same place we had it last year?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay.[1725.85]
Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to uplift a name? I just want to make sure that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of someone who recently passed away, Hazel Nell Dukes, who was a longtime advocate for civil rights and a stalwart leader in the NAACP. She served as president of NAACP's New York State Conference from 1977 until her passing in 2025. She was, she dedicated her life to ensuring equal opportunity for Black Americans. She was elected to her third term as a National NAACP Board of Directors at the 1982 convention in Boston, and she made history as the national president from 1990 to 1992. She was a passionate advocate for so many issues, for every child, arguing and fighting for early childhood education regardless of race. And she has just deep connections to so many here in the city of Boston and New York and the entire New England region. So I just want to make sure that we remember Hazel Nell Dukes and her fearless spirit and leadership. And I know that today is actually her services, and there are a number of those who are, who travel today from Boston in observance of her services. So just want to make sure we memorialize her here on the Boston City Council. The chair recognizes Council Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Dean Conway passed away on Sunday. He is responsible for the youth soccer program in Jamaica Plain. He started, he served as the director of coaching for Mass Youth Soccer starting in 1992 and then became the first full-time director of coaching in 1997. JPU Soccer and a thriving youth soccer program wouldn't exist without him. And he was inducted into the Mass Youth Soccer Hall of Fame in 2003. And, you know, just sad to hear about his passing and, you know, it's a big loss for all of Jamaica Plain and the soccer community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Weber. I'd also like to end today's meeting honoring the memory of our sonographer's cousin, Hillary Flaherty, who passed away Thursday in her sleep. So my condolences to you and your family. So today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Councilor Ed Flynn, Mark Feeny; on behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, Hazel Nell Dukes; on behalf of myself, Astrid Joseph, Shane Slayman; and on behalf of Councilor Weber, Dean Common. A moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Aonella Chamber on Wednesday, March 19, 2025, at 12:00 noon. You all have received the email, but we're having our Women's History Month reception here, myself and Council Murphy hosting it on Monday, March 24 at noon. So I hope to see you all there at 1:00 p.m., apologies. Thank you to my colleagues, the central staff, the clerk, and the clerk's office, and the council sonographer.